This is my wife Cecilia.
Oh, hi. We've been working together for years now.
Exactly. Well, thank you all for coming. It's gonna be interesting, I can guarantee you that.
You guys are doing well.
No, no, no. All you have to do is when it's time.
The clicker, she gave me the clicker?
I don't know. Do you have it?
Can you ask her?
Somebody put that thing in there. I don't know.
Um, does a woman here? Does?
I said everyone has to be quiet.
Yes, sir.
Okay? Cause I'm gonna step.
Nice, sir.
If you want to be quiet, step. Control the crowd. I asked you to be quiet. Okay? Two minutes. Guys, two minutes.
Alright. We give away seats. We do rebuttals, and then we're gonna have this public speaking. No questions or answers. We have a hundred questions. Just one to them. You're welcome.
Hey, folks, just understand that you can't stand here and talk in the aisle. Right? It's against the law to be quiet. We have blocked this way. You need to find your seats right now, okay? You have plenty of seats up front over here, too. What's your seat? So, please start. Sit down, please. Now, by the byway. Where do you sit in the middle?
Okay.
Good evening. Sorry we're a little delayed, but there's a long line outside. Welcome to the Community Board One Queens Local Area Hearing on the proposed Innovation Queens Development. Right now, I'm going to give you the agenda. The Innovation Queens team will be speaking. After the presentation, I will ask Javi Caliendo, Co-Chair of Land Use and Zoning, to reiterate the community board's position. As this hearing is for the community board to listen to the public's viewpoint, we will then go directly to those who are here to testify. We will call the speakers by name. Tom Ryan will call five at a time. Then I will call you each individually. Based on the number of audited speakers and other people waiting to speak and time constraints, all speakers will be limited to one minute to make their remarks. If you have lengthier statements, you may leave them with us tonight or email it to qn01@cb.nyc.gov. Please be concise, speak to the point, and state your position indicating support or opposition to the project. Again, I implore you, stay within the one-minute timeframe so that everybody can have the opportunity. Thank you. Tracy, you want to start the presentation?
Thanks, Marie. Hi, everybody. On behalf of the Innovation Queens team, thanks for your time. I'm Tracy Capuon with Kaufman Astoria Studios. Joining me are my partners Jay Martin with Bedrock Real Estate Partners and Jamison DeVal with Silverstein Properties, along with a Ron Chen of ODA Architects. We are keeping this present short in the interest of giving this crowd the opportunity to use this time to speak to us, but know that the full presentation is available on the innovationqns.com website, so please feel free to look it up there if you are interested. And with that, I will turn this to Iran for the land use.
Thank you, Tracy. Good evening, everyone. As you know, I heard they're kicking us out around nine. There's a lot to cover, and so for the interest of time... For the interest of time, my goal in the next 25 minutes is basically to present the architectural projects to you. It's big, it's complex, so I'm gonna do the best that I can in order to be coherent and kind of explain the merits behind the project. Later on, we'll answer questions. I'm gonna start with the bigger picture. As you know, we all know Astoria has a very defined borders as a neighborhood, has the East River on the west side, Highway 278 on the north, and Northern Boulevard is on the south. And historically, Northern Boulevard, because of the rail track, has been developed linearly for mostly industrial, commercial, and infrastructure areas. And therefore, you know, becomes an obvious opportunity to develop more housing in the edge of the neighborhood as opposed to in the middle or at the center of the neighborhood like many other neighborhoods do. If you zoom in, you see our site here in red. It's also good that it's right at the edge because it's the edge or the end, if you will, of Steinway Street and 35th Avenue, as you know, very strong commercial avenues. And that would be an anchor that would propel economical development and bring, you know, activity both at the streets and beyond, all the way to the end, Northern Boulevard. We're also positioned in a place where we have diversity of public transportation, from bike lanes, bus routes. We've got three proximate metro stations with four different lines. And if you look at the land use map, and I know you guys are not architects, but in yellow is basically where you see housing. All of the red color and the blue color in the middle is mostly commercial and cultural institution like the one that we're here. So we have the Museum of Moving Images, Frank Sinatra across the street, Kaufman Studios. And then down in purple and pink, you see a lot of the industrial buildings. And so it kind of makes sense to close the circle of residential through the side, especially at the corner of Steinway and 35th Avenue. Now, people ask me, what's the difference between developing one block as opposed to many blocks together? And I'm telling you, from an architectural standpoint of view, when you develop each block separately, there's very little flexibility. You have to build all of the massing in one place, which doesn't allow us architecturally to provide unique opportunity for the public realm. We do have that opportunity here. You all know this very well, but it's nice to see it from above. In blue, you see the cultural and mixed-use areas on the northwest, and then the residential neighborhood right north of 35th Avenue, and then commercial and large retail south of Northern Boulevard with manufacturing mixed use here. What we'd like to do, as I said, is we'd like to bring more residential into this area, but also create a mixed-use walkable area that would be accumulation of all of these programs together. Now, there's very detailed zoning language, and I'm not gonna go through this right now. The information exists, and the land use have seen it. And I'm gonna go to the pedestrian experience. Some people would say, what do we care about the pedestrian experience? Well, beyond our apartments, especially at the post-COVID era, what happens in our neighborhood when you walk around matters to our quality of life. And Astoria has been blessed with diversity of cultures and diversity of restaurants and foods. And in that sense, it's a very rich neighborhood and pleasant neighborhood to live in. But unfortunately, these five city blocks are not really contributing to that narrative, not in program, not in use, and definitely not in its public giving. And so I'm just gonna take you through, again, the corners that you know, but Block A that we propose to develop is the United Artists Theater. That's a great neighborhood amenity, and we're gonna relocate it to Block D on the second floor, so it doesn't capture as much street level that is blocked by a wall at the ground floor. Block B, as you know, is PC Richard and Son with the parking in front. Again, if you live in a tri-state area and you want to buy a TV, you come here. But, you know, it's not necessarily community or local community benefit facility. And then on Block C, thank you, we have resale car areas. And then as you go towards Block D, there's a lot of mechanics garage that basically expand all the way to the corner of Block E next to Northern Boulevard. So what are the community benefits? And how did we think of this plan to begin with? So first of all, beyond the affordable housing, which we'll talk about in a second, we basically built a plan from a party, meaning the ground floor, that is based on community benefit. And I want to point out a few things that I think are very not typical. Twenty-five percent of the private land, so quarter of the private land, is gonna be dedicated as open public space. And it's gonna be diversity of open public spaces, because we know post-COVID, a good public space is not just a park and it's not just a basketball court that serves a certain amount of the community. It needs to be flexible, it needs to be diversified, it needs to cater all of us as we spend more time at home, as we work from home. And if you look carefully at the center of it, right at the junction here of 35 and Steinway, we propose to build a civic park right next to PG-35 that exists already. That park would have great lawn and play areas and dog runs and landscaped areas. And then on the left, you'll see a covered plaza. That covered plaza will be flexible area for markets. You could have a food market that celebrate Astoria's markets, can have a Christmas market, etc. And because it's covered, it's gonna be flexible to be used around the year. And then at the left, you have the public plaza that would consolidate areas that is more commercial and office space. And then on the right side, as you get closer to the heart of the neighborhood, there's gonna be a connection from the park through what we call a pedestrian passageway. That's what people call paseo. That's gonna be a totally pedestrian wide area with a lot of small food and beverage shops and local businesses. And then that would lead you into the public courtyard, and you'll see the program around it, and then two more family-style, more intimate type of courtyard. Each one of them, if you look at the picture, is as big as PG-35, wide and big. It was said about the public space, I want to make this point very clear and important. We spent two and a half years locked at home, and in this area, Astoria, in this area of Astoria, we have the least amount of open space per capita. So if we want to step outside and we want to go to a green space or a shadows place or a place that is paved or play with our kids or take our dog, it doesn't exist. And it was very important to me as the architect of this project, to provide this area, it's not an obvious thing. The developers will have to pay for it, will have to build it and maintain it, so we can all enjoy it as part of our future. Now, we didn't stop there, because an open space without the right indoor space that supports it is useless. And I said it many times about our developments in other places where you can have open space, but you have extremely expensive stores next to it that nobody uses. So what we've done, and it's not typical, instead of leaving the ground floor space to the forces of the market, whoever pays more, is we went hand-in-hand with the development, the community, to find partners to create programs that would support the community. A hundred thousand square foot of that ground floor place in blue is gonna be community facility. Next to the park, we're gonna have a community innovation hub. It's gonna be a flexible space for art, for events, for after-hours learning. That's right here. We're gonna have a lifetime learning, artist residence, digital gallery, and daycare. And in fact, the developer, not me, have reached out to the community to find partners for this, and Tracy, do you want to go through this?
So, just very quickly, we're very proud of this impressive group of partners. They deliver amazing services in this community today, and we're very excited to work with them to allow them to expand these services in the neighborhood. The Museum of the Moving Image will have a new digital gallery that will give them another venue to expand their arts education programming. Pioneer Works is creating an artist and residence program for Queens-based artists. HANNIC is going to manage new senior affordable housing and programming for seniors as well as act as the affordable housing administrator here. The Floating Hospital is looking to establish a free clinic with a wide range of services, medical, dentistry, mental health and wellness, and an onsite daycare facility. And it's creating this community innovation hub that would be anchored by the LGBT Network's Q Center. That provides health services in partnership with Mount Sinai Queens. It's got an art gallery and showcases students and local artists' work. They have a business incubator and a shared workspace, and they have youth-dedicated space for their network's Leadership Academy program. It's working with the Queens Library to establish a branch of their tech lab that offers tech-centered skill-building workshops, a full calendar of all ages maker programming, and soft skills and job entry training. We also are working with Urban Upbound on entrepreneurship programming, teaching people how to write business plans and take that idea into a place that you can capitalize on it. We're working with Jacob Re settlement to expand the programming they're very well-known for here, particularly ESOL language classes and their after-care program, which includes a recreational component for kids aged five to twelve. And there's also this neat place that I just learned about called the Queens County Model Railroad Club. They have these amazing model trains, and this would give them a place to showcase these trains and also hold workshops, so people of all ages could learn how to continue this great hobby. And the best part, in this hub, there's space for people who don't need to be absolutely there all the time, but need classroom space from time to time, auditorium space, event space. This could be a true gathering space for this community, and we're excited about it. Thanks.
Thank you, Tracy. Now, at the balance of the areas at the ground floor, which is not entrances to building, etc., is gonna be a commercial space. Again, not two commercial areas are equal. So what we did is we went and been very specific about the program that is gonna exist and that we want to curate for the success of that public engagement area and be very meticulous about what goes where. For example, we decided there's gonna be a grocery store right here at the corner of 35th and Steinway, that we're gonna have a food hall that opens up to 35th, but also opens up into this active courtyard, etc., etc. And then you see the movie theater entrance is gonna be right here at the corner where the actual cinema is gonna be on the second floor, which opens up right into the market where we want to have the diversified restaurants and the food, etc. So all of these are very meaningful, and they're meant to be very specific. And Tracy can talk about some of the partners on the food? Do you want to do that?
Yeah, sorry to belabor this, but I don't want to leave out our friend Joe DiStefano, who is a well-based Queens foodie. He does food tours here, and he's done some amazing work. And we'd love to see him curate the Astoria Eats Food Hall to really bring it home that these are Queens-based restaurants that should be showcased in any food hall that's put here. And pointing out again that we are not replacing the theater that everyone loves, we are building them a new state-of-the-art facility that they will move into.
Thank you. So it was very important to anchor two places for office. By the way, there's not a lot of need for office in the space, but we believe that in the future, as people want to work more local and for local businesses to start flourishing within the community, we need to dedicate some offices. We anchor them in two edges of the projects. The other thing about offices, it activates the street in times where, you know, housing or other programs are not. So if you look at this graph, it's a balance between activation of the public space around the clock to make sure that it's safe and that it's active. And then on top of it, we've got the residence.
Quiet, please, quiet. Let them finish, so you can speak. Okay?
Can I continue?
Continue, please.
Okay, so...
Quiet, please, quiet. Let them finish, so you can speak. Okay?
Can I continue?
Continue, please.
Okay, so...
Okay, please. You'll have your turn, please.
All right.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. So, sir, 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 one second. We'd like you to speak, sir. The housing, as we know, is in great need within the city, as well as affordable housing. All right, so we propose to build twenty-eight units, two, eight-hundred units here, out of which seven hundred would be affordable units. Out of the seven hundred affordable units, three hundred are gonna be units that would rent under $1,000. Five hundred units, five... You'll cover it? Okay, I'm sorry, there will be coverage in detail. Okay, we're taking very great measures towards sustainability. As you know, this is a... As you know, this is a science that continues to grow, and every time there's additional technology, but we're looking at, oh, sorry, at electrical energy, geotechnical energy, stormwater, et cetera, et cetera, to make this the most sustainable neighborhood there is. And here you have the image of the entire thing. And you can see that we try to kind of gauge the height from the center, closer to the neighborhood, all the way to Northern Boulevard as it goes up. Now, I want to take you through a short tour. What I'm going to show you right now is basically existing and proposed, so you can get more familiarized with what's coming. Now, we're at the corner, as you see here, right? We're at the corner of Block A, looking towards 35th. This is the theater. Here is the new proposed office building, and this is the corner restaurant, and this is the food hall that serves about 35th and the other side. You see another angle of it from here. As you walk down here on 38th Street, right now you're looking at the side of the theater, which is that wall. We're proposing to open this up so the sidewalk continues freely, without barriers, without enclosure, as an open space right here. Why we think this is important? We have a food hall that supports people that want to sit, work, play here over the hours of the day. We're going to have the artist here, a non-for-profit artist organization that can display outside. And this will be a beautiful kind of family area for gathering and leisure. As you look on the other side, so now I'm turning around and I'm looking towards...
PC Richer.
PC Richer, thank you. Yeah, thank you. What we're going to see here is the passageway that connects to the park. Guys, thank you. And this would have the small stores that we're talking about. This could be local businesses or food. And that would be a pedestrian connection right into the park. And then here you see the children's playground. I just want to point out that all of these designs have been submitted and approved by city planning, and they're binding. So this is what we're doing. And then right across from it, we have the, what we call the quiet courtyard, where people can read a book. We're envisioning an adult library and after-school program. So when you watch the kids on the other side, you can actually relax. Here is a view of between Block A and Block B, and I'm going into the park. This is the existing playground at the corner, as you see, and we're expanding it to be a full park. That's a pretty substantial-sized park. There's going to be a great lawn here that is very flexible for games and balls, et cetera, a dog run, a lot of trees and landscape and hardscape, a beautiful space. And then looking back to the south, you see this is the existing kids' playground. You see the Innovation Center, again, that would be opening up to the park. Looking back, you see the area here. I'm looking now back towards Block C, B, and A. You see the community hub with this beautiful park on the right. And as we go towards Block D, which right now is the mechanic's garages, we're going to have the theater on the second floor and then retail underneath it. Then you see here the entrance to the park. And that corner right now is it stepped down towards the residential building across the street. Here is the covered market. So imagine that on both sides, we're going to have vendors of different types of food. They could open up into a full kind of market. There's very few things like that in New York and definitely in Queens, and we think that that would celebrate the culture of food in here. And then at the end, the urban plaza. What you see here is the cinema on the second floor with a big projection screen. People maybe can watch a football game or a soccer game, and then the plaza here. I'm going to skip the environmental impact study, something that we submitted. It's very, very long, and I'm willing to do it after if time permits, but we submitted all of the informations to the committee. And if you have questions, by all means, but with the time that we have, I want to allow you time to ask questions. Through the time, we work with the Land Use Committee, I think it's now, I don't know, two years or more, and we've got input and questions, and some of it is very important. I want to just touch on two elements in response to some of the comments you made lately because, again, we can't review everything. The first one is the document we received by Jerry that basically relates to the height of the building as they relate to the residential buildings next to them across the street. And what you see here is that this, right against Block D and E, we have the townhome residential block. There's about four stories here and five stories here. And we had a nine-story and a 16-story building. Pardon?
Three stories.
This is more than three. This is... All right. Okay, three. Three. Okay, three. Thank you. So, I mean, we were debating about this. We're trying to, I guess what they asked was to go down to eight-story building or R6. And what we've done, committee, this is just the past week, is we considered the following. This has to be studied further. But what we consider doing is totally eliminating that building right here and distributing the FAR to places where you don't impact the shadow or the viewpoints, which you see in orange, and then reduce that building from the previous nine to eight. So we're going eight and below, right across from these residential buildings, which I think it's a big improvement, and I hope you guys would look at it favorably. I also want to very quickly talk about shadow studies. Shadows are tricky. There's many slides. I'm just going to explain you how it works. Basically, when the sun is high, the shadow is short, as you know. So in the morning and in the evenings, the sunset, the shadow is very deep. And then in the winter, when the sun is lower, the shadows are deep. In the summer, they're not so much. Here, what you see in green is the proposed green areas that we proposed. In gray is the existing shadow that already exists in the buildings today. And in purple, you'll see the new shadow that was created by the new mess. What you see here, that between March and September, in the morning, there's a bit of an impact of that shadow along the south, but there's a lot of overlap between the purple and the gray, meaning that they're basically overlapping shadow that exists already. Then in midday, 12:30, there is an impact on shadow on 35th Avenue, but we've been very careful not to touch those buildings that you live here. And then towards the afternoon, as you know, the sun comes down, 4 o'clock, the shadow is deeper. But again, I just want to point out that there are, when the sun is low, even low structure creates shadow. And so there's a lot of overlap between the gray and purple. Going back to June, midsummer, even in the morning, you see the shadow is quite minor in midday, regardless of the height, it's almost nonexistent. And then towards the afternoon, again, see what happens with the new shadow on 35th Avenue. And then we're getting into December. December, you have the lowest sun, the biggest shadow, but it also only shadows when it's sunny. In the morning, you're going to have very deep shadow, right here. December 21, you see the shadow here and the areas of overlap. And clearly, the worst scenario is in December at 3 o'clock at night. Okay, affordable housing, Jay.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jay Martin with Bedrock Real Estate Partners. We really appreciate your participation tonight. We want to have a dialogue...
Please let him speak.
...with the community.
Thank you.
So we appreciate you taking the time to be here. I know there's a lot of interest in the affordable housing component of the project, so I'm going to briefly describe it, and then later we can give more details. There's 711 permanently affordable apartments that will be created by this project, with studios starting as low as $715 a month, one bedrooms starting as low as $903 a month, two bedrooms at $1,071. In total, 540 new homes will be created under $1,675 a month, almost 200 of which... I'll actually address that issue next. Thank you for raising it. In total, 540 apartments will be under $1,675 a month, 200 of which will be family-sized two- and three-bedroom apartments. These are permanently affordable, subject to rent stabilization, which means if you're in your apartment, you're only subject to the rent guideline board increases. So I'll go to the next slide, Iran, if you could advance it. These apartments will be available for people with incomes as low as $37,000 a year for an individual, $53,000 a year for a family of four. And what that means in terms of people in the community who work with their hands, who work at an auto body shop or cleaning, these apartments would be available to them. There also are apartments available for people, individuals making $56,000 a year and families of four making up to $80,000 a year. We all recognize, the development team in particular and the people in this room, I know, there's a housing crisis in this city, and we believe that creating more than 2,800 apartments in an area where very few exist today is a part of the solution. It's not the only solution, but it can help to alleviate the upward pressure on rents. And we are interested in having a dialogue with the community and with the administration, which we are actively involved in now, in expanding the affordability of the project, doing more than what you see here. This is just a start. So I'll turn it back to Iran.
Is anyone not understanding we're not calling out during this meeting?
There will be no...
Please, please, let them speak so you may speak.
No, I think we can conclude this?
Yeah. We're just putting up the information on the two upcoming workshops because there's been a lot of interest. The first will be on a Saturday, June 11, between 12:00 and 2:00, at the Melrose Ballroom on 33rd Street down the block. And the second workshop will be virtual. It will be on June 14, a Tuesday evening from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And go to the innovationqns.com website for more information about the registration link. Thank you all.
Thank you. Now, I will pass the mic to Jerry Calviando, our Land Use Co-Chair.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Land Use Committee formed a subcommittee. The Land Use Committee is a committee of the full board. So the Land Use Committee Subcommittee reviewed the project prior to the very minor changes that were just made and came up with a recommendation to the full Land Use Committee. The Land Use Committee will meet in the next couple of weeks and will make a recommendation to the full board. So this report is not the Community Board's final recommendation. It must be voted on by the full Land Use Committee and the full Community Board. So the project is subject of zoning change for partial five blocks in Long Island City. The proposed action is to rezone, which is currently M1, Zone 1 FAR, C42A, which is 3 FAR, utilizing a large-scale development. What that means is they're locked into a massing of the buildings based on city planning agreeing to what they're doing. But they can move things around in their proposal. So at the outset, this Community Board of CB1 has historically been pro-development. But when a project is reasonable and when the community at large will benefit by the development, very important key issue, when we see that a project is not in the benefit of the community and has detrimental issues, we will vote against it. So it was agreed that by the, it was generally agreed by the Subcommittee that the project is somewhat detrimental to the community for several reasons. Please don't clap. Just let's hear, let's get it over. The proposed rezoning and special permit with a large-scale development height and setback waivers and building massing are presented are not respecting the character and bulk of the adjoining residential blocks. It was consistently agreed by the committee that the massing and development should be designed to be higher on Northern Boulevard and step down to 35th Avenue. That is not completely consistent with what they just modified. So we still want them to do more if we were to agree with anything. It was generally agreed that the open spaces are being proposed as a major benefit to the community, but are also, the rationale is more and higher when closely reviewed seem to be designed to be commercial corridors as access to the proposed retail stores as in a shopping mall. It was generally agreed by the committee that the passive recreation spaces, which are proposed adjacent to Park 35, and again, designed as a supplement to the commercial and community facility rental spaces and not programmed specifically to the public, that we understand is, we're hoping that that gets changed. With that, it was generally agreed that the developers should provide more active recreation space, such as small soccer field, basketball courts, et cetera. It was also generally agreed that since the school that the Community Board originally wanted and that the SCA will not support, that those spaces should be used as such spaces as YMCA, Variety Boys and Girls, those type of uses that would be more beneficial to the community immediately adjacent to the area. It was generally agreed that the proposed waiver to permit retail space to be in excess of 10,000 square feet was objectionable. And in lieu of that provision of their request, each 10,000-square-foot space that they propose should come back to the Community Board for a separate review and approval. So in conclusion, it was generally agreed by the Subcommittee to disapprove the application with that recommendation that the zoning districts and associated bulk and floor area to be within 100 feet of Northern Boulevard, no greater than R8X, which is 17 stories, 175 feet, mid-block, R7D, which is a 5.6 FAR with a maximum height of 11 stories or 115 feet, and within 100 feet of 35th Avenue, and R6A, which is no greater, which is a 3.6 FAR, no greater than eight stories, 85 feet. So the intent was to cap all along 35th Avenue, no greater, locked in, no greater than eight stories because of the impact, shadows, everything else. That's what our Subcommittee is going to recommend to our full Land Use Committee for a vote. And then ultimately, if that passes, goes to the full board for the full board's recommendation to the City of New York. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we will go to the public speaking portion. Timeline will call five people at a time, and then I will call on you individually. Please stick to the one minute. No clapping, no cheering, no booing, only because it takes time. And then we're depriving somebody else the opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, first five up, Marie Zaffron, George Statomitis.
Mark.
First five up, Marie Zaffron, George Statomitis, Nancy Silverman, Caroline Quirk, and Jenny Dunlap.
Mark Stathman had to leave because he's deaf-lined and the link that he was sent wasn't working.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say it.
Mark Stathman had to leave because he is deaf-lined and a cart or whatever the link was that he wanted to be able to use is not functioning.
Okay.
So we have George, Nancy, Caroline, Jenny, and Connie.
George Mariades. Thank you very much for this opportunity. Why did I come to Astoria? I came for progress and the future. Progress that we see in all our commercial strips, progress at our schools, parks, art institutions, and our great cultural melting pot community, just like Hell's Kitchen from where I held. Progress away from the dirty streets filled with junk cars, overstuffed dumpsters, ugly buildings, obnoxious uses. Getting away from the world must be our goal. Getting away from the world must be our goal and legacy, so to build a better community as our forefathers did for us. Progress is picking up just one piece of paper, which builds a great community that can spread. Not picking up one piece of paper will cremate a community that none of us will want to live in, and that too will spread. Progress also means jobs. I'm not talking about $200,000 jobs. I'm talking about everyday needed jobs. Delivery staff, cooks, shoe repairs, painters, plumbers, dishwashers, sales staff, and office staff. Hurry up.
Four seconds.
Progress, progress means business, new opportunities.
Time's up. Sorry. For or against? You didn't mention. Are you for the project or against?
Well, wait a second. That wasn't a minute. I practiced this a hundred times.
It certainly was. I'm sorry. It was a minute, please. For or against?
I am for the project because we need the jobs and we need the maintenance of the community.
You may leave your statement with Tom Ryan. Before we go further, if you have a comment that's longer than a minute, you may leave it with Tom Ryan on your way out if you don't get to finish it. Nancy Silverman.
Thank you. I will be emailing a statement to the board, since we shortened time. I really want to thank Liz, and Jerry, and Evy, and Jeff, and Amy, and Richard, and Marie, and everybody else that is on the land use committee for the amount of work that you have done on this, the amount of time that you have dealt with the developers on this, the amount of time that you have spent challenging them on their claims, and that you continue to do this. I urge you to vote no, without stipulations, without compromise. This zoning cannot happen. We cannot trust the developers in this to live up to the stipulations that you will put in. They, we know from the DMAP Street stipulations that they couldn't have preferential parking, Kaufman couldn't have preferential parking. That was a stipulation when the DMAP Street was approved. There's still preferential parking. We couldn't trust them with such a small thing then. We cannot trust them with such a big thing now. Thank you.
Thank you. Catalina Court.
I'm Carolina Court. I've lived in Astoria for over 15 years, and I'm a founding member of Astoria Not For Sale. You can read some of the dozens of reasons that Innovation Queens should not be approved on the petition against it at astorianotforsale.org, which almost 2,000 members of our community have already signed. I also ask that you read our op-ed in today's Astoria Post. So with my one minute, I'll just say this. You don't have to marry the first person who asks, and any development that builds here, we're going to be stuck with till death to us part. Real estate for new housing in this city is so valuable, there will be other companies who want to build housing on this land, and we can set the bar for a developer that, as one example of many, has the bare minimum decency to actually talk with the small businesses on the development site, which they have not done. I go and check all the time. By voting no to Innovation Queens, you will communicate that we do not need luxury housing, we do not need extreme high rises, and we do not need developers who don't show basic respect and consideration of the actual residents and small businesses of our community from the start, especially those who will be displaced either directly or through the ripple effect that luxury rental pricing always has on neighborhoods. You can have the courage to set the precedent. You can say no to this. This needs to be a watershed movement for the city.
Time's up. Thank you. Chris Hanway. Chris Hanway. Maria Fatoro. Oh, Chris, go ahead, please.
Good evening. My name is Chris Hanway, and I'm honored to serve as the executive director of Jacob A. Reese Neighborhood Settlement, 133-year-old community-based organization working with children, youth, families, immigrants, and older adults across eight sites in Long Island City and Astoria, including just down the street here at PS 166. As one of the nonprofit partners, I am here to express Reese Settlement's full support of the Innovation Queens process, project. I do as someone whose organization has worked with Kaufman Astoria Studios for many years, and who has witnessed their firsthand neighborhood-focused generosity, community-building spirit, and dedication to improving the lives of residents of Western Queens. The proposed project would not only add hundreds of good-paying jobs and vital open outdoor space to a community where it is desperately needed, but would allow Reese Settlement and other trusted local nonprofit organizations to more deeply engage with the largely immigrant communities in the area, offering everything from English language classes to senior housing to meeting space for the marginalized, to workforce development communities, and to the performing visual arts. I am proud of Reese Settlement's relationship with Kaufman Astoria Studios.
Maria. Maria?
Wait, did you skip a few people? Did you skip a few people?
No, I'm going by my list.
You did skip them.
I had Chris, and now Maria Fatoro.
And Connie was supposed to speak in the first group, and did not. Now she's number eight?
Yeah.
Okay, just a minute.
Okay.
Five. What is your name?
Jenny Doobnow. He called my name and also Connie.
Okay. He's skipping the list.
Oh, okay.
Okay, go ahead, please.
That's fine.
Go ahead. One minute.
Jenny Doobnow here, member of the Western Queens Community Land Trust. I've lived in Queens for 20 years. Innovation Queens should be voted down by the community board for the following reasons. It will bring a huge influx of approximately 2,100 unaffordable luxury units to this diverse working-class corner of Astoria. The other 700 units deemed affordable are actually not affordable to most people who live here. There are only 284 apartments pegged to the lowest incomes, 284 out of 2,800 total apartments. For the other so-called affordable units, studio apartments range from over 1,000 to almost 2,000 a month. Are those affordable?
No.
One bedrooms are 1,400 to 2,400 a month. Affordable?
No.
In exchange for this pathetic number of apartments that we can't afford, these developers are raking in the profits with their huge increased FAR height, where they could previously only build to a few stories, they can now build to 16 or even 27. Innovation Queens will cause surrounding rents to rise, it will displace small businesses and tenants during a homelessness crisis. Vote down the project. And I have a question. Did you guys sneak in some extra space in your latest proposal? Because it looked like there was some added stuff that you wanted to rezone, so I'd be curious to know about that.
Thank you. Connie Murray.
Hi, my name is Maria Fatoro. I have lived as a renter in this neighborhood for over 25 years, and I could have put my name on a list and been in Manhattan Plaza, but I did not want to live in a neighborhood that was dominated by high-rise everywhere. Are you aware that the 227-story buildings proposed in this plan are taller than the ball drop Tower 1 in New York City Times Square? That is an outrage, and it is absolutely a slap in the face to the needs and requests of the community here. I am encouraging the board to vote no on the proposal as it has been submitted, and my recommendation is that they lead with Innovation Queens, a developer's plan to build upon Astoria's rich cultural fabric to deliver a mixed-use gentrification project. It is insensitive to the housing needs of the currently residential community, and arrogantly scaled to the benefit of the developers.
Thank you. Connie Murray. Connie, please be quiet, please, so we can get everybody to speak. Connie Murray, please.
I have lived here, just up the avenue, for almost 25 years, and I urge the community board to reject this rezoning. The developers have lied about outreach to affected businesses. We as residents have approached those businesses ourselves, and the only outreach has been to intimidate some of them out of their decades-long locations. And the developers are being coy about the submitted additions to this proposal, which I have screenshotted and emailed to your offices, community board. This rezoning is about air rights. If we allow for it, once these developers get these air rights, they might likely drop this entire Innovation Queens project and instead sell individual lots of land for billions of dollars. Our vibrant, low-income community deserves better than being a pawn in a billionaire's tax-abatement game. Thank you.
Thank you. Marino Frost. Marino Frost.
He's gone.
He's gone, okay. Tom, can you call up the next five you have then, as well?
I have number six, Brian Denton. Be quiet, please. Here's the mic. Can you hear me? Okay, number six, Brian Denton. Number seven, Jenny Doonah.
She spoke already, Tom.
Okay, I'm only going by the list. Connie, will you be quiet, please?
She spoke already.
I'm only going by the list. I don't know. This is the, number eight is Connie Murray, number nine is Mary Ann Cummings, number 10 is Luciana Figaro.
Marino, go ahead, please.
Hi. Love to all good people in this room, whether you agree or disagree. My name is Marino Frost. I'm the only one in this room, in this whole project, who has at Block A my residence, my small business, which is a recording studio, and I run a nonprofit organization called Mission of Love, all from the Block A, which is around the corner. So I have a lot of stories that all of you should hear, but I don't have time to tell you anything because it's only one minute. But I can tell you the truth, the truth based on the facts. When this project came to me, when I heard about it last year, it became right away the worst thing that ever happened to me in my life, because right away, I was about to be destroyed completely. My business, my apartment, and above all, the purpose of my life, Mission of Love.
Time's up. Are you in support or opposed to the project?
Let me just...
Just use one word. Time's up. Time's up.
Well, I just want to say two sentences, which is...
Time's up, sir. Go ahead. Are you for or against the project?
Okay, sir. Give me one word, sir, please. I wanted to say that none of these organizations ever called me and asked me for any help. No politicians, none of them. No, 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 wait, wait. I want to, no. Let me tell you. Let me just say...
Did we call? Stop, stop. Okay. Excuse me. Can we all chill? Next up, introduce yourself and start speaking.
Hello, everyone.
And the rest of us, calm down. Thank you.
Yo, don't be a bouncer, that's exactly what you're in the vogue, this guy, right? This is a public... Tell them not to cancel. This is a public...
Okay, okay. Tom, everybody relax. Please, sir.
Hi, my name is Brian Denton, longtime resident, first-time community board speaker, and I'm definitely coming back for more of this. This is what I love about my neighborhood, and I've been here for 20 years now. This is a neighborhood of great diversity, dynamism, and creativity. What makes this place so diverse, dynamic, and creative, of course, is its people. Now, if we want to preserve the character of this neighborhood, and we should want that, we're going to have to build more housing so that anyone who wants to come here can come here. That's why I would encourage the board to vote in favor of Innovation Queens Development Queens. This development alone will not solve the housing crisis, but with its 700-plus affordable units, even more market rate units, it will be a good start. It's going to be a good start to create a rental market where landlords compete for tenants and not the other way around. With the new people that arrive, the new businesses that get started, we're going to make our neighborhood even better. So let's do it. Let's build. Let's keep the new in New York City, and the future of our diversity, dynamism, and creativity of the future depends on it. Thanks.
Time's up. Thank you. Mary Ann Cummings. Mary Ann? Luciana Figaro? Sylvie Warner? Kimber Wiggins? Anna Vermero? Terry Gallard? Ken Marzocco? Isadora Zanin? Are you, okay, good. Go ahead, please.
Let's give them 90 seconds now, since only people in the...
No, but there's many people waiting to speak anyway. Go ahead, please. Okay, introduce yourself.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Awesome, all right. Yeah, my name is Isadora. I grew up in this neighborhood. I grew up on 34th Street between 35th and 36th Avenue, and let me tell you, I played outside a lot, okay? I played in the streets. There were dog parks. I played with my friends, and I could afford an apartment there. Well, not me, but my parents. I'm an immigrant. My family came to Astoria from Brazil in 1997. We moved into a one-bedroom apartment. The people across the street from me were from Yemen. My best friend Hannah lived with her six siblings in a two-bedroom apartment, and I slept over sometimes. Down the street from me were my Mexican friends. We played Monopoly in the hallway. On the other side was my friend, who is Chilean, who had a one-bedroom apartment as well. She got to sleep in her bedroom. I had to sleep in the living room. These are the kinds of families that live in this area of Astoria. These are the kinds of families who don't necessarily make the median rent for Astoria, which, by the way, is $45,000 a year, way unaffordable, people who cannot afford any of the housing that you're proposing, not even the so-called affordable housing. And actually, this is...
Time's up. Thank you. Thank you.
No.
No.
No Innovation Queens.
Got it. Next.
My name is Kimber Wiggins, and I work and live in the infected area of the project. I also work with Mission of Love alongside Marino Frost. My house is right on 38th Street, across from the Honda dealership. I support the Innovation Queens project 100% because I know that it will bring to the Astoria area positive, much-needed change that will revolutionize and revitalize Astoria. I understand the concerns of the residents and business owners here. When I was a kid in the 1900s, we had no idea of the Metro Tech project coming up until the late 80s. We should be thankful, consider to the board that we even had the chance to even present ourselves in this way. I'm also pleased to hear that we will have affordable housing, because, as you know, over the past 30 years, the rents have gone higher and higher and higher, and more people have left New York City. This project will bring what's needed to that area.
Time's up. Thank you so much. Joe Bogovich. Kristin Rush. Jeremy Welsh-Lovman. Revan Pickett. Nakia George. Go ahead, please. Can you introduce yourself and state your position?
Hi, Kristin Roth. I'm opposed to this development project. The key issue here is affordability. We do need housing, and if you look across the state, the whole entire city, there has been no development project in this city that has created actual affordable housing that is accessible to people. We are looking at a project that will create, that will just exacerbate the intense income inequality that this city is facing right now, and I love that there's public space, and I love that there's community partners. The people who work at those nonprofits won't be able to afford to live in the area. And we're talking about, like, we do need housing. We need all of it to be affordable, and I'm completely opposed to the height of the project that's being developed. I really agree with the idea that no developer has been able to be trusted in this city. We see this, and we do not want this city to keep becoming a place where the people who want to put down roots in this city can't afford to stay. I'm opposed to the project.
Thank you. Next. Who's next on the mic? Okay, so Jeremy Welsh-Lovman, are you here? Revan Pickett? Are you here?
Isadora Zanin? Are you... Okay, good. Go ahead, please. No, but there's many people waiting to speak anyway. Go ahead, please. Okay, introduce yourself.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Awesome, all right. Yeah, my name is Isadora. I grew up in this neighborhood. I grew up on 34th Street, between 35th and 36th Avenue. And let me tell you, I played outside a lot. Okay? I played in the streets. There were dog parks. I played with my friends. And I could afford an apartment there. Well, not me, but my parents. I'm an immigrant. My family came to Astoria from Brazil in 1997. We moved into a one-bedroom apartment. The people across the street from me were from Yemen. My best friend Hannah lived with her six siblings in a two-bedroom apartment, and I slept over sometimes. Down the street from me were my Mexican friends. We played Monopoly in the hallway. On the other side was my friend, who is Chilean, who had a one-bedroom apartment as well. She got to sleep in her bedroom. I had to sleep in the living room. These are the kinds of families that live in this area of Astoria. These are the kinds of families who don't necessarily make the median rent for Astoria, which, by the way, is $45,000 a year. Way unaffordable. People who cannot afford any of the housing that you're proposing. Not even the so-called affordable housing.
Time's up. Thank you. Thank you.
No. No Innovation Queens.
Got it. Next. Okay, go ahead, please.
My name is Kimber Wiggins, and I work and live in the infected area of the project. I also work with Mission of Love alongside Marino Frost. My house is right on 38th Street, across from the Honda dealership. I support the Innovation Queens project 100% because I know that it will bring to the Astoria area positive, much-needed change that will revolutionize and revitalize Astoria. I understand the concerns of the residents and business owners here. When I was a kid in the 1900s, we had no idea of the Metro Tech project coming up until the late 80s. We should be thankful, consider to the count, to the board, that we even had the chance to even present ourselves in this way. I'm also pleased to hear that we will have affordable housing because, as you know, over the past 30 years, the rents have gone higher and higher and higher, and more people have left New York City. This project will bring what's needed to that area.
Time's up. Thank you so much. Joe Bogovich. Kristen Rush. Jeremy Welsh-Lovman. Revan Pickett. Nakia George. Go ahead, please. Can you introduce yourself and state your position?
Hi, Kristen Roth. I'm opposed to this development project. The key issue here is affordability. We do need housing. And if you look across the state, the whole entire city, there has been no development project in this city that has created actual affordable housing that is accessible to people. We are looking at a project that will create, that will just exacerbate the intense income inequality that this city is facing right now. And I love that there's public space, and I love that there's community partners. The people who work at those nonprofits won't be able to afford to live in the area. And we're talking about, like, we do need housing. We need all of it to be affordable. And I'm completely opposed to the height of the project that's being developed. I really agree with the idea that no developer has been able to be trusted in this city. We see this, and we do not want this city to keep becoming a place where the people who want to put down roots in this city can't afford to stay. I'm opposed to the project.
Thank you. Next. Who's next? On the mic. Okay, so Jeremy Welsh-Lovman, are you here? Revan Pickett? Are you here? Nakia George? No. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to say that I'm in full support of Innovation Queens project because there's a lot of opportunities that will be placed here. And it's time for us to grow up and to adapt to our neighborhood and go for those jobs and stop saying what's stopping us and go forward. Because I remember living here, I've been here for 33 years. And I remember living here, and they're building the... They're building the movie theaters. And it was just a dream for us. And as soon as they put it up, me and my friends went every Friday to the movies. So I'm in full support of Innovation Queens because it's time for us to graduate, and it's time for us to grow up. And we're not kids. There's only one baby in here. We're not kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Revan Young. Excuse me. Carl Alston. Claudia Koga. Benjamin Hayes. Revan Bobby Moore. Can you please line up on either side?
Let's have a little respect for everybody's decision, if you're for it or against it. Doesn't make a difference.
Excuse me.
Excuse me? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And let's have some respect for this man. So you have some order. Let's respect his decision to keep some order here. Let him do his job. Let him do his job.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Okay. On that side, that young lady, can you please state your name?
Yes, good evening. I'm Terry Gallart, and I'm here in support of this project. I can clearly envision how improving this small area will be beneficial in many ways. I volunteer along with Marino Frost at Mission of Love. And unfortunately, that he didn't finish his statement. On his behalf, I'd like to say that the development team reached after him very proactively, and he is in support of the project, as I am. It's natural to be afraid of change. Feeling the unknown is understandable. Your first day of kindergarten, first time driving by yourself with your new license, it can be as simple as a new haircut or trying a new food. It can be overwhelming, like clueless new parents caring for their baby. The first time, or the fear of many people in Astoria might have felt when they arrived to begin their new life in a different country. All of our neighbors, friends, and family members who did this are proof that Astoria is a place where change can be viewed as an opportunity for a new and better future. The developers call this project Innovation Queens because it's a method of finding solutions in unprecedented and ingenious ways. There are less than 200 people currently employed in these five blocks. The construction will create thousands of permanent jobs and temporary construction jobs for 10 years, which I don't consider temporary. These are the reasons I endorse the project. Without change, progress and improvement cannot be attained. Please join me in supporting Innovation Queens.
Thank you. You, sir, please introduce yourself.
My name is Carl Alston. I'm from Queensbridge Projects, born there in 1959. So I've seen this neighborhood come and go. I've been here all of my life. And I believe that this is a good project. It's good for jobs for the local people. It's good for housing. I've lived in Queens all of my life. And now this is an opportunity for maybe to move out of the projects into a nice development that I can afford and that other people can afford. So I'm definitely supporting this project. And I believe that we all should get together and try to figure it out to have some good stuff coming to our neighborhood for once.
Thank you. One? Yes. You, sir. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Joseph Bogovich. I'm actually a landlord in this area. I think this project is a constructive and good project. What you currently have is one level, not even factories. It's more like storage units. You know, it's dirty. There's rats and, you know, abandoned vehicles in that area. And having a new development is good for beautifying the neighborhood, creating jobs, and making our neighborhood a nicer and more constructive place. So I'm for the project.
Thank you. Ms. Koga.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Koga, and I've lived in Astoria, in this area, 68 years, longer than most of you who are in this room. So I know Astoria from the beginning to the end. And we've lived on the waterfront. And Astoria houses on the waterfront, a neglected area for so many years, and bounded in. And what I see in this innovation project is that it's going to open up Astoria to all of the people. And I believe that it's going to support everything that we need here as a city. We're growing, and we have to be able to understand that in growth. I don't say we give up our homes, et cetera, et cetera. But I say that we must open our minds to growth here in Astoria. And I thank you for that and for many, many years. Many years. And right now, our children in most of Astoria and Long Island City does not have a facility where they can go and entertain. This is going to bring entertainment to our youths on the street right now, dying because they have no leadership. And we need to open up.
Time's up, Ms. Koga. Respectfully, thank you. Ken Marzocco? Ken Marzocco? Please go to the podium. Go ahead.
My name is Ken Marzocco, and I am the owner of a property on the east side of 38th Street, between 34th and 35th Avenues. I have owned and worked at that location for over 40 years. In that time, there has been tremendous progress in developing the surrounding neighborhood, both residential and mixed-use. I would be in favor of the Innovation Queens project as long as it accomplishes what its promise is in terms of affordable housing and jobs for the community, including construction jobs for the local residents during the building process. Looking at the proposed zoning change on the zoning map, the east side of 38th Street, between 34th and 35th Avenues, from the curb to the rear of the buildings, would only... Would be left as a slither of M-11 zoning. This is only one-half of a city block left out of the proposed zoning change, which would be left surrounded by zoning with the residential component. I believe it is only fair and equitable to add a residential component to the M-11 zone that will be left on this half-block of 38th Street.
Time's up. Thank you. You, sir, please introduce yourself.
Hi, yes. My name is Peter Keynes, but I'm submitting testimonial for Reverend Patrick Young, who's the senior pastor of First Baptist Church. He says, "To whom it may concern, I am the senior pastor of First Baptist Church of Esau Elmhurst. I'm writing to express my support of the Innovation Queens rezoning. The project will be life-changing to those living and working in this community. This new development will bring good jobs, affordable housing, open community space, and retail space. This building project will create new housing opportunities which our neighborhood greatly needs. I have members who live in the area and are looking forward to those affordable housing units being available to them. Overall, the affordable housing units, good jobs, and retail development will greatly benefit the neighborhood, especially residents of Western Queens. I therefore fully support the proposed rezoning and request that it be approved." In his service, Reverend Patrick Young, senior pastor.
Thank you. Benjamin Haynes. The Reverend Bobby Moore. Carol Wilkins. If you're here, please go to the podium. Mr. Max Petry. Marissa Williams. Please state your name, please.
Ms. Max Petry? But thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Maxine Petry. I'm the executive director of Pioneerx, which is a cultural center. I am here to support the Innovation Queens project due to the expansion of the Kaufman Arts District. The Kaufman Arts District will serve as a community arts and culture hub that offers accessible programming for neighbors of all ages to learn, experience, and create art. There will also be resources and free exhibition space for our Queen-based residents, artists and residents. Arts and culture are key components of the city's recovery, supporting and enabling arts organizations, nonprofits, and local artists to continue to foster creation and shareability of art is very important. And I look forward to seeing how this goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Hilliard. Giancarlo Pinto. I'm just going to go down the list. I'm assuming some people left. Victor Gural. Eric Ben... Ben... Benaim. Paola Duran. Sir, please introduce yourself.
Hi. Hi, my name is Eric Benaim. I am the owner of Modern Spaces, a Queens-based real estate brokerage. I'm also a lifelong Queens resident. I'm here in support of Innovation Queens because Queens needs more affordable housing. This is the largest private development of affordable housing that Queens has seen in many, many, many years. I've also had personal experience working with Kaufman for probably over 10 years now, and I have not ever had a better experience with a developer who actually really cares about the community and works with the community and is dedicated to the community. And if they say something, they actually mean it. So I'm here in support of Innovation Queens. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you speaking?
No.
No? This gentleman here, no?
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms... Thank you.
My name is Paola Duran.
State your name, please.
Paola Duran. I'm the director of Housing Development for HANAC. We are a non-for-profit organization located here in Astoria. For the past 20 years, HANAC has played an ever-expanding role as an affordable housing developer in the city of New York. HANAC now owns and operates five full-service residences that consist of approximately 700 affordable housing units, all in Queens. HANAC is fully committed with the development of affordable housing, and we support any efforts towards that goal. Reason why HANAC will be working with Innovation Queens to support their efforts to create new housing, economic development, and educational facilities for our Astoria neighbors. HANAC has been working in Queens for decades, and we are aware of the housing needs of the area. Reason why we really support this application for the proposed rezoning that would allow the development of Innovation Queens to develop affordable housing for all. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for your consideration in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Going down the list. Stacy Belagos. David Kilminick. Joe DiStefano. Carl Goodman.
Hey, I'm Carl Goodman. I want to first welcome everyone to the Museum of the Moving Image. I'm the executive director of the museum. Come back on Saturday for a program that is especially characteristic of our programming. 1978's The Whiz, one of the first movies ever shown here with the original dancers from the film. You see, we and the Kaufman Astoria Studios were cut from the same clock. We came out of the same economic development project 40 years ago. We, on behalf of the museum, I want to express enthusiastic support for Innovation Queens. It'll expand our audience by one-third. We get a new space for programming. We ain't going nowhere. We're in a city-owned building, on city-owned land, and we're very excited to be a cultural, pre-existing anchor in this glorious neighborhood. Kaufman has always listened to us, and I do not expect that they will not continue to do so. Thank you.
Mr. Goodman. Mr. Goodman, on behalf of the community board, thank you for allowing us to use this space tonight. Thank you.
I am so appreciative that you said that. It is an honor.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Belagos, and I'm the executive director of HANAC. I'm speaking in support of this project. HANAC is a multifaceted social service organization with extensive experience in affordable housing, especially in Queens. We've served vulnerable populations in New York City for over 50 years, We've served vulnerable populations in New York City for over 50 years, touching the lives of 30,000 individuals annually with a wide range of programs and services for diverse, multi-ethnic communities across the boroughs. HANAC also operates five senior housing buildings with over 700 senior affordable units. New York City is home to more than 1 million older adults, and in Queens alone, where we provide significant services for our aging population, there are over a quarter-million older adults. The average Astoria older adult waits approximately over five years for an affordable apartment. HANAC is excited about this project and our partnership with Innovation Queens, which will help address the urgent need for affordable senior housing in Astoria. Innovation Queens will provide more than 700 apartments that will be permanently affordable, but 100 of those units will be dedicated to senior housing. HANAC will market the senior apartments within the local Astoria community, administer the housing lotteries for them in accordance with the New York City requirements, and manage them. HANAC will also advise on developing...
Time's up. Sorry. Thank you. Yes. Are you waiting to speak, sir? Go ahead, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Joe DiStefano. I'm a Queens-based food writer and food tour guide, and for a long time, I have enjoyed coming to Astoria, as have many foodies, because it's a destination with a multicultural tapestry of cuisines: Greek, Serbian, Bangladeshi, Egyptian, Thai, Chinese, to name just a very few. It really mirrors the diversity of Queens itself, but restaurants here and throughout the borough have suffered during COVID. I am really excited and frankly hungry to be partnering with this project to curate an amazing food hall that will mirror the diversity of Astoria and Queens itself and provide opportunities for eateries started by immigrant strivers throughout the borough, showcasing their diverse culinary heritage. Innovation Queens is good for the Queens' food scene and good for Astoria because it will re-energize local businesses and create new opportunities.
Be quiet, please.
I can't wait to see this project come to life and not just because I want to eat there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Can you allow me to call more names? Thank you. Andrew Rupchandani, Tom Gretsch, Richard Caliste, Cynthia Davis, Mohammed Udeen. Thank you. Please announce your name.
Good evening all. My name is Dr. Andrew Rupchandani. I'm the proud executive director of Zone 126. Zone 126 is a community-based organization focusing on Western Queens and is at the forefront of a collaborative strategy that supports youth attending local under-resourced schools to ensure that they have the skills and resources needed to succeed in life. We do this through collaborative partnerships with other service providers from the time a child is born to the time they're a young adult graduate from college and enters the workforce. We have a particular focus of students who live in NYCHA public housing, Astoria, Ravenswood, and Queensbridge houses with a vision of breaking cycles of generational poverty. My family moved here over 40 years ago, and we still reside here in the community. And I was fortunate enough to attend great local public schools from kindergarten through 12th grade. I also know all too well what it's like to grow up in poverty where my family did not have equal opportunity, and so I often ask myself the question, what role can new development play in addressing longstanding inequities? I have several conversations with the team of Innovation Queens, and I believe that they plan to address many of the community's challenges that have been further exacerbated by the pandemic. I truly believe...
Thank you. Time's up. Thank you.
I'm in support of this project. Please also let the record reflect that Carol Wilkins was stuck in another meeting, and we have her testimony here today.
Please leave it with Mr. Ryan. Go ahead, please. I'll bet you.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Ricardo Calix, and I'm the deputy director at the Queens Economic Development Corporation, nonprofit organization that works in Queens to promote entrepreneurship, enable development, and I'm here to say that I support this project. The project definitely reflects many elements of what economic development is. It includes job creation, very important. It includes affordable housing. It's including public space, something that is definitely in need in the area. Sometimes, especially after this pandemic with the stagnation, there needs to be certain investment that helps to fuel local development. So this will create jobs. It will create businesses. It will create increased tax base, which then provide more revenue to be invested in the local economy for infrastructure and local services. I fully support the service, and I look forward to this project moving on. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Davis.
Good evening, everyone. Hello. My name is Cynthia Davis, the director of community outreach for the Floating Hospital, one of the oldest charity hospitals here in New York City over 155 years. And we fully support the Innovation Queens project. In Astoria, there's a lack of essential services for the community, and the Innovation Queens project will bring in much-needed, community-based organizations that will provide much-needed services to the community. I am also, on behalf of the Floating Hospital, we are also so thrilled to see 2,800 units of houses being built, with 700 of those units being permanently affordable. Commercial real estate space for the size that we need is not really commercially available and affordable in Astoria. Development projects like this are one of the few opportunities charity hospitals like us have to expand services for those who need it. If this project goes through, the Floating Hospital will be able to combine 11,000 square feet of clinic...
Time's up. Time's up. Thank you. Are you waiting to speak, sir?
Yeah.
Go ahead, please.
My name is Nick. I'm a small business owner. I'm the owner of Yoga...
What is your last name?
Velkov. I'm the owner of Yoga Gora on Broadway, and I don't feel very good about this proposal, Innovation Queens. And the best way I can describe my discomfort is I can share a little story that happened this weekend. I went to pick up my laundry, Chow's Laundry, on Broadway. I said hi to the owners. We know each other. We smiled. We had a nice little pleasant exchange. On my way home, I passed by 31st Avenue, where I saw the 31st Avenue Open Street, and my neighbors were there, mingling, smiling. I saw the community leader who created the 31st Avenue Open Street, Evian Zopoulos, carrying Lucamates. Can't make this up. Evian Zopoulos, carrying Lucamates in Astoria, offered me a couple. And then another community pillar, Eli Goldman, who created this amazing pitmaster barbecue community program, peeked his head in and said, "What's up?" And we had this amazing neighbor-hood-y kind of exchange where neighbors were smiling and exchanging pleasantries with each other, and to me, it feels like Innovation Queens will rob us of that. We lose our neighborhood, so I say no. Let's keep the neighbor-hood-y feeling.
Mohammed Udeen, are you here? Go ahead, please.
Good evening, everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, I am from Astoria, a resident. My name is Mohammed Udeen. Since COVID-19, we are already suffering from the loss of our family here. This is the builder building this fine, but there's a way they weigh the building. I think the affordable housing, this is going to hurt our Astoria and also our living in 50 years, United States, in Astoria, our Bangladeshi community. Our business, small business, they are not going to be able to stay longer. All small business, we talked to the COVID-19, and they're already hurt enough. We're trying to support them. I think that we got to do something better than what you're thinking right now. This is not enough for affordable housing right now. Thank you so much, everyone, and our Bangladeshi community will stand against it all the time. Dozens of families here, and we talked to the last month. Lot of peoples. We all, we grew up in Astoria, we live in Astoria, we love Astoria. We don't need to move to the Buffalo or Michigan, another state.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Jeff Griffin. Quiet, please. Jeff Griffin. Bernard Kennedy. John Miller. Joseph Sandagata. Go ahead, sir. Please announce your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Bernard Kennedy. I represent the family that owns the PC Richard property, and we're in support of this project, needless to say.
Hey, respect, please. Quiet.
We feel that the economic and cultural and community benefits of the project are self-evident. Certainly, the project is going to produce many jobs and certainly alleviate a measure of affordable housing issues in the city. The Kaufman Astoria folks who I've dealt with in the process of this project have a tremendous amount invested in this community, not just now, in its history, and its present, and in its future, and I think they deserve our support.
Thank you. Okay, continuing on. John Miller. Joseph Sandagata. John Meladiatis. David Suco. Jennifer Bush. Go ahead, sir. Please announce your name, please.
John Meladiatis. You know, I'm the son of Greek immigrants. I'm for the project, and, you know, I've been here for 46 years. I just remember Kaufman Studios, this whole area, being all dog crap, broken glass, boarded-up windows. When Kaufman, when Kaufman, can you not heckle me in the lobby? My timing not be rude, please?
Yes, thank you.
Because that's all I've heard is rudeness. So all I remember is broken glass. They robbed our car. They beat up my father and left him for dead on the street right in front of our house. We own a house there. My parents have finally finished their mortgage this month, actually, so they worked hard. My dad's 86 and my mom's 77. He drove a yellow cab, okay, which went down to nothing. We took our hits. But I do know that this project will create jobs. I hope it will create affordable housing because I understand people's concerns, but I do know that progress is inevitable. You could do it in a planned way like this, or you can wait for the investors to come in one by one and look disjointed and have Steinway. So up to you.
Time's up. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
I'm Dave Sokka. I have lived in Sunnyside for 33 years, about a mile away from here. I speak in support, and I want to present my perspective as a senior. I welcome the 100 apartments that are going to be designated for seniors. There are challenges for us if we want to stay in the community as we age. I live in a walk-up. I know at some point I'm going to need accessible housing. It's just not available. I don't want to wait for five years like the person from HANAC said is the length of the waiting list. Seniors like me don't want to move out of the neighborhood as we become less mobile, so I urge you to approve this project.
Thank you. Thank you. Jennifer Bush. Ryan Adhami. John Sora. Alise Yay Damadine. I know I crucified that last name. I apologize. Kristen Parker. Charles Yu. Charles Yu. Anina Marv. David Chu. Okay. Go ahead, sir. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Charles Yu, senior director of business assistance at the Long Island City Partnership. I'm here to speak in support of the Innovation Queens project.
Can you speak louder, please?
Our neighborhood has emerged as a vibrant mixed-use community, and that's a good thing. People are moving to our great neighborhood. Space is becoming more limited. Proposed project will create more than 725 permanent affordable and senior apartment units on city blocks that could be better utilized, more than two acres of public open space, and a 60,000-square-foot community hub for organizations with deep local roots to expand their much-needed services. In addition, the project will create many jobs and career pathways during construction and permanently for local job seekers. Existing small businesses will benefit too, when new residents and visitors spend locally. If this project does not move forward, it will be a remiss opportunity to expand access to affordable housing, create more public open space and community space, hire local job seekers who are ready, willing, and able to work locally, and bring more customers to neighborhood businesses.
Time's up. Thank you. Sir, go ahead, please.
My name is David Chu. I'm a resident of Boulevard Gardens on 55th and 31st Avenue. I urge the community board to vote unconditionally no to this project. This project will just displace residents, workers, and small businesses, and I want to speak today as a father and as a member of Local 3, IBEW, the Electricians Union. You know, even if a single job went to a fellow union worker here, I'd say it's to hell with the jobs. We don't need another construction project that's going to bring mass displacement to New York City that none of us can afford. And let's just be real, all the community benefits that are being promised are just to buy off a handful of poverty pimps and children, members, you know, people of color in our community, but will actually displace more people of color than they will ever bring in. And I just want to say to the people who supported this project based on the so-called benefits that they would bring, I worked at Hudson Yards. I was the lead technician that built the fire alarm system there. Not a single job. I never saw a single Harlem resident work there, despite the fact that related promise thousands of jobs, construction union jobs for Harlem residents.
Quiet, quiet, please.
Don't believe the hype, don't believe the lies.
Thank you, sir. Your time's up. Thank you. Continuing with the names. Tony Barsamian, Mimo Salazar, Lynn Kennedy, Mason Van Geison. Go ahead, please.
Tony Barsamian. I'm speaking as the chairman of the Steinway Astoria Partnership. I hear everyone's concerns, and I will listen to them again and think of all the benefits that are also being raised. But from a business point of view, the merchants on Steinway Street have welcomed Innovation Queens because they have spoken to us originally over a year and a half ago about bringing people to the community that will shop on Steinway Street, and that's very important. We need shoppers on Steinway Street. Small business is the backbone of our community. The stores need shoppers. This will bring thousands of shoppers to the block. We support it from a shopping business point of view. We believe that the people will come here and walk up and down Steinway Street and enjoy the beautiful aspects of our community and shop Steinway Street and shop local.
Quiet, quiet.
So in one word, as a business, the small businesses, Steinway supports this project completely. Thank you.
Time's up. Next. Go ahead. Please announce your name.
My name is Mamo Salazar.
Go ahead, please.
I'm a longtime Queens resident. So this becomes an ideological battle between pro and con, and everybody throws talking points at each other, and if you're a city official or someone on the board, usually your true choices are either you accept the plan or you reject it outright, and it's a lose-lose situation for a lot of people. I understand the points of view of the people that are supporting this. Unfortunately, or fortunately, there is another way, and that's what I'm asking you to do. There is a way where you can have a community-led development, where the people of Queens start the project, where they find a developer, hopefully a nonprofit developer like the Mutual Housing Association of New York or others, and the visions that we're seeing on the board are being led by the people here who are in opposition. All the people that are pro this development, I understand your needs. You can have the jobs that you're looking for. You can have the commercial and the innovation in the artistic district that you're looking for, but not in a way that screws people over. You can do it by working with community land trusts who will work with these nonprofit developers to bring the same kind of innovation that looks like you're seeing on the board, but actually doesn't make the prices go up.
Time's up.
So please, don't support it. Thank you.
Lynn Kennedy.
My name is Mason Van Geison. I'm urging you to vote against Innovation Queens because we can and we should do better. We do have a housing crisis in New York City, but it is first and foremost an affordability crisis. These developers have proposed a project that does the bare minimum in offering affordable units, units that would still be out of reach for those who need them the most. Their market-rate luxury apartments prohibitively expensive for us, not to mention the threat that an influx of luxury units will raise area rents and property taxes, pricing out people like me and my neighbors. They suggest that this development would solve a lack of housing in Astoria. However, according to the NYC Housing and Vacancies Survey, New York actually has a relatively high vacancy rate for units priced above $2,300 a month, like those proposed at Innovation Queens. The real housing crisis exists for genuinely affordable units where vacancy rates are laughable, and yet developers continue to propose projects like Innovation Queens instead of real affordable housing. What a shame it is that our city, our neighborhood, faces a housing crisis while luxury units sit empty because they were never built to serve the surrounding community in the first place. Innovation Queens does not resolve any part of the affordability crisis and in fact exacerbates the very issue it exceedingly claims to solve.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Quiet. Cecilia Rodriguez. Abdul Razag. Kate Peterson. Anna Contreras. Anyone here? On your way down? Okay, good.
Hi, my name is Anna. What I love about Astoria is the sense of community that we have here, you know, the local businesses, the culture. We're all here because we love this place and we want, you know, we want something good for our neighborhood. This is my favorite neighborhood. I'm an immigrant. I have lived in many different states, different neighborhoods all over New York City, and this improvement, I think that improvement is always a good thing. It will create spaces for local businesses. It will create programs for the community, for kids and teenagers, and it will expand our community. After COVID, you know, this place needs people. I think that I will want this community to have more people to go to my favorite local restaurants and local businesses, so I think that this innovation will improve this neighborhood.
Thank you. Abdul. Kate. Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Kate Peterson. I've lived in Astoria for 16 years. As the project exists, I see no major benefits and significant detriments to this community, and I'm opposed. I came to that opinion by looking at the environmental impact study that was done, and I went with the facts. I mean, it says that there is going to be a significant adverse impact on early childhood programs, on library services, and that active open space in the residential study area would decrease by approximately 15%. So I think it's very important that these facts are made public and promoted so that everybody can read the same study and make their opinion based on what is actually true and not what is put on a website to convince you of something. As my fellow neighbors said here today, we live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Contreras, Peter Caines, Reverend Cohen Mason, Joe DiStefano. They've gone already. Mohammed Islam. Ramon Moat. Your name, sir?
My name is Pastor Cohen S. Mason. I'm the senior pastor of the Community Church of Astoria, and as an advocate for my community, I'm always looking for projects that will bring truly affordable options for our residents. New affordable housing in Western Queens is not a desire, but rather a need. Many NYCHA residents are living in substandard conditions where they are constantly overlooked and grossly undeserved. Affordable housing is incredibly limited, leaving many residents with no way out of the NYCHA cycle. I'm also excited about the innovation in business and workforce development that will be a very important part of this project. Community wealth building is vitally important to understand communities. I'm also writing today to express my support for Innovation Queens. While 800 new affordable units will not benefit every resident in need, but it's a glimpse of hope for thousands of Astoria residents seeking new affordable housing. I strongly believe that this project is a step in the right direction.
Thank you. Time's up, sir. Thank you.
I'm for it.
Next. Go ahead, please, sir.
Hi, my name is Peter Caines, and I'm a member of the Center of Hope International and a member of the staff as well. and a member of the staff as well, located in Long Island City. Given my involvement in the church, I have grown to love Astoria area and those who reside here. Most of my days are spent in Astoria and Long Island City, but unfortunately, given the astronomical rents in the area, moving closer to where I work and worship is not an option. When I was first informed of Innovation Queens, I was thrilled to hear about the new affordable housing this project would offer. Having an additional 300-plus affordable units in our community would give people like me a chance of moving into this great neighborhood. I support any project that will provide affordable housing which is desperately needed and I hope you consider Innovation Queens for approval. Thank you.
Ramon Moat, James Bassi, Kim Colicchio, Celia O'Donnell, Mike Hughes.
Hi, I'm James Bassi. I've lived in this neighborhood for 38 years. I strongly oppose the project. A, this is not a high-rise area. Look at the countless empty units in the high-rises all on Queens Plaza and we know this can't work. Two, get out of here and find an area to build that is in scale with your project rather than in a working-class neighborhood which would not survive due to accelerated gentrification. Lastly, as to trust, your own people in the last town meeting lied, saying this meeting was full. Julie Wan's people had to force them to allow our residents to fill the empty seats, so how can we trust you? Bottom line, once you were to get the rezoning, you could basically do whatever the hell you want and reconfigure the project. Vote no, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you, my name is, my name is Kim Colicchio. I am a resident of Astoria for one more month because I'm priced out after July. I'm a mom, I'm a co-founder of an organization called The Connected Chef who serves fresh food to families in this community who were displaced, who are food insecure, and who were dramatically affected by the COVID pandemic. This project will do nothing for our community. It is only going to further displace the people who live here. We have seen many people come up talking about the benefits. They're not benefits, we deserve more than what's happening. This is not affordable housing. There's 700 units that are $2,800, is not affordable. And nobody's talking about the people who are living here currently who are not going to be able to use this space. And so I unequivocally say no to this project, no stipulations, this is not for Astoria.
Thank you. Next.
Hi there, my name is Celia O'Donnell. I've been a resident of Astoria for about 17 years now. My husband and I moved here when we were priced out of Brooklyn. With acknowledgement to all of those people who have spoken against the project much more eloquently than I'm going to be able to, I'm going to focus my opposition to the project on a very specific issue. We've talked about all of the opportunities and I'm a huge community-based organization person. I'm very tempted to love the vision of everything that's happening on the first and second floor of this project, but I can't overlook the sheer numbers that you're asking our community to absorb. As a parent of two who have attended schools in the area, growing up Green Shutter School, PS76, and now Academy of American Studies, our schools are overcrowded. I have watched what I refer to as the fancy part of Long Island City.
Thank you, I apologize, time's up.
Sure, that's fine, we don't have the resources to support your vision.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, good evening, this is Mohammed. I'm living in Astoria since eight years. This is the best neighborhood I've seen ever. I think if here is, multi-storied building is established, there will be no space for kids playing and lot of things, a negative effect will be on our environment and community. Where is a fire, there, sorry, where is a smoke, there is fire. Before I speak, all speakers, hopefully we understand by their speech, there is going to be a fire, so stop this and let's free Astoria society. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Yeah, how you doing, everyone? My name's Mike 171, I'm Mike Hughes. I'm the super of 37th Street from 34th, 35th Avenue, all the apartments here. I'm also associate producer of Wall Writers, is a documentary graffiti artist. We're the innovators of New York City graffiti culture, so if you got any odd things going on, you guys gotta talk to me. I'm the ghetto pope of New York City's graffiti artists incorporated, all right? And so that being said, when I first moved here, community board one was here on the corner, and when I got here, these buildings were one-story, were garbage and trash everywhere, rats running around. I came out with my two little kids, I cleaned up, they said, can you come to the next meeting? And they presented me certificate of appreciation for me cleaning the block. So I've been here since, oh, 40 years doing this shit. They built these buildings next to us, next thing you know, they take the scaffolds down, rats are everywhere in the buildings next door, the cracks, they used dynamite. On the first project, cracked our walls and ceilings, Kaufman did zit, right? They come now with illegal construction workers that were here throwing cat calls at my wife and daughter, she's being black, I'm white, my kid's mixed.
Sir, sir, time's up.
That's it, if you guys gonna do it, I'm against it, but if you're gonna do it, have respectable workers there and clean up that yourself.
Thank you, thank you, time's up.
And if the bouncer comes near me, we're going.
Thank you. Natasha. Quiet, please. Natasha Redman, please. Eli Goldman, Tom Vassili, Nahid Akhtar. Quiet, please. Thank you, sir.
Hi, this is, I am Nahid Akhtar. I live A Block since 1994. I am supporting this innovation. Queens rezoning, please, thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Natasha Raymond and I am opposed to Innovation Queens primarily because, as has been discussed by almost all of the comments here, the issue is affordability and this is doing the absolute bare minimum. Any, the actual numbers that people have been saying are incredibly small, especially relative to the development. And as said before, this doesn't have to be the only development. This is not a locked-in bet. You can have a better development with more affordable housing that has the benefits without all of these detriments and concerns. So we need to say no and wait for more.
Eli.
Hey, everyone. Hey, everyone, my name's Eli, I'm the owner of Teakin BBQ. Yeah, where to begin? I'm definitely not for this development. I think we all know here, we want housing, but the question is like, how do we get there and how much of it's affordable? It's not even 50% with this proposed development. This kind of reminds me of like trickle-down economics and I can't think of a, I mean, I honestly can't think of a development, whether it's Hudson Yards, LIC, Williamsburg, parts of Brooklyn where like the promises that these luxury developers have like made have really turned into reality. I think there's a reason why we all want to live here. It's the fact that like you can have someone that's an electrician, someone that's a food service worker, and someone that has an office job in Manhattan all in one place. And if this development comes here, I feel that's going to be put in jeopardy.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, I'm Tom Vassilio. My parents moved here 40 years ago from Greece, our landlords, I've been living here for six years, run a small business. And I'm against this project as it stands right now. As people have mentioned, 10% of it being absolutely truly affordable is just not good enough. It's too big, it's too loud, it's too Brooklyn. I mean, the firm that's designing it is the Denizen and the J Street Building, which are like prime Brooklyn. Anyways, we can do better, we can do much better. And having worked at real estate and having worked at WeWork for five years, I've made a lot of these promises. I've made beautiful decks like this, I've pitched people on projects. And then two years later, when numbers aren't great in the building and occupancy's low, who do you think pays? The current residents who are going to get up rents and all the other people in the area who are promised things and won't get them. So unless it's ironclad, less scale, and actually beneficial to the community, no. That said.
Thank you.
Develop something awesome there.
Time's up. Young lady, are you waiting to speak? Tom, this lady in back of you, you, okay, thank you. I don't want to miss anybody. Mohammed Akhtar, Mohammed Ali, Aki Benjamin, Nancy Agley. If I called your name, please come down to the mic. Maria Moro. Go ahead, sir. Your name, please. Name, please.
Mohammed Akhtar.
Go ahead.
Mohammed Akhtar, I live in A Block, yes.
Do you support or oppose this project?
I support this innovation, yes.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Aki Benjamin. I am 13 years old. I go to PS 122 in Astoria for, and I'm in 7th grade. I'm actually here with one of my friends.
Good for you for being here.
And I really, really want to convey that I am against this project. I, the reason I am actually in Astoria is because, well, first, let me start.
Respect, please.
When I was born, I lived in Brooklyn until my parents were priced out of Brooklyn by big housing developments and big shopping developments like this. Then, then I was in Sunnyside until I was priced out of Sunnyside because of gentrification caused by big housing developments like this. So now I'm in Astoria. I do not want to move again. I imagine that no one here wants to move again. I want to know what's going to happen to my friends who are going to be forced to move. I want to know what's happening to me if I am going to be forced to move. So I do not want this project to happen under any circumstances.
Thank you, young man, thank you. Quiet, quiet. Go ahead, please. We're trying to get everybody to speak, go ahead, sir.
Hey, everyone, my name is Mohammed Ali and I am supporting this project. I'm 19 years old and I've been living on the A Block of the movie theater for 19 years of my life, I've never moved. And I support this project because it's primarily, primarily of the focus is for the youth and people are saying it's going to separate the community, but there's literally going to be a community hub for everyone to come to and do their work, do.
Quiet. Go ahead, please.
If they're promising us that, I'm pretty sure they will be providing that and.
Thank you.
Yeah, that would be nice. Instead of your sarcastic petty comments, we don't need none of that. We're all mature, we're all mature here, we don't need none of that, thank you. I'm for the project.
Thank you so much. Nancy Agley, Maria Moro, Amanda Vasquez, Remo or Renzo Ramirez. Go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Nancy Agley. My parents moved to Long Island City when I was six weeks old. I've been living here ever since. When I grew up, I decided I want to buy a house. And there was no place, I wanted to buy one more than Long Island City. And I worked and I did it. And I love this area because of the people and the sense of community that's around here, and I think it's going to be heard by this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Amanda Vasquez. I am a lifelong resident of Astoria and I am against this project because I like three-story buildings. I do not want to live in Manhattan. If I want to live in Manhattan, I would have moved to Manhattan. I don't need to have a high story next to my building. It's ugly, it's an eyesore, no one wants it. In addition, I have no, I have no understanding of how you're going to maintain 7,000 people you're bringing in with one train station, Steinway Street, and two bus lines, and the electric grid, and we have flooding here and the schools here are already overcrowded, as stated before. You're pricing out everybody, it makes no sense to build high-rises around here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Go ahead, sir. State your name, please.
Good evening, community board one, my name is Renzo Ramirez and I am a member of 32BJ SCIU. As you know, 32BJ is the largest property service union representing 85,000 property service workers across the city. We maintain, clean, provide security services in buildings like the one being discussed at Innovation QNS, which will lead to at least 50 building, 50 new building service shops. The commitment to good permanent jobs in this project is clear. In examining the impact of this project, we hope that the commission will consider how it will affect building service workers. The best way to make sure developments like the one being proposed have a positive impact on building service workers is for developers to make a formal commitment to pay the prevailing wage and create good jobs with family-sustaining wages and benefits. We are pleased to let you know that the developers affiliated with this project, Silver Stein Properties, have made an early commitment to creating prevailing wage building service jobs at this site. We are in full support of this project, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, is there anyone waiting? Okay, Rebecca Bradspies, Andrea Hall, Stackwise? Stackwise, please go. Tom Warren and Danelli Rodriguez. State your name, please, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Bradspies. I'm a professor at CUNY School of Law where I run the Center for Urban Environmental Reform. I'm here, I'm also a longtime Astoria resident raising my family here. I'm here alongside my neighbors from Astoria to say Astoria is not for sale. We need investment in our community that supports and expands opportunities for the incredible vibrant community that we have. Investment that makes it more sustainable, more affordable, more welcoming to a wide array of people. This proposal is the opposite of what we need. We welcome sensible development. This is not sensible development. This is an attempt to extract value and wealth from this community and give nothing in return. We deserve more than crumbs. What you are offering us is crumbs. We don't need 17 luxury high-rise buildings. We do not need this project. What we need is affordable housing. What we need is housing for seniors. What we need is housing for families.
Time's up, thank you.
Astoria is not for sale.
Next.
Hello, my name is Andrea Hall Stakhnevich. I am an Astoria resident. I'm a community organizer. I am proud to have been a part of the Astoria Not For Sale group. Thank you so much to Evy and everyone else who's worked on this. I am also a small business owner, I'm a licensed psychotherapist, and I have been running my business in Astoria trying to help people of this community. I am here to say, and to say that I am strongly opposed to Innovation Queens and the project that they are trying to implement in our community. This project will displace and cause irreparable harm to the working-class families and small business workers and owners who are the backbone of our community. This is the moral fabric of Astoria, this is what makes Astoria so special, is the working-class people, the small businesses, the minority-owned businesses, and they will be displaced. Rents will be so astronomically high that people will not be able to afford rents in their shops, for apartments, for their homes.
Thank you, time's up.
We will see an untetherable rise in rent. Say no to Innovation Queens.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Yo, what's good? It's Donali Rodriguez. I am a lawyer, lifelong Astoria native. We outside Crescent Street and Hoya Avenue. I've been here my entire life and one thing is for sure, Innovation Queens is gentrification Queens, point-blank period. I've been living here my entire life. How many times have they told us the same story, the same script? I'm especially frustrated to hear and see my people in NYCHA being sold absolute lies. When they built Gantry Park, they came and told us the same bullshit about community benefits and all of that, and all they've been doing at Gantry Park is raising the rent up to $5,000 for a one-bedroom apartment and kicking black and brown people out the park nonstop for just being black in the damn hood. It's over for that. This project is racist and does not care about black people. This. This project is classist. It doesn't care about poor people. You look up and down 21st Street, all you see is buildings going up. And what also has gone up is the rent. We cannot afford this. We do not want this project. Go home. We want 100% affordable housing.
Time's up.
100%.
Thank you.
You guys are giving the bare minimum.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna say this last...
That's enough. Excuse me. Other people want the opportunity to speak. Is there anybody here? Is there anyone here? I understand there is a few people here who did not register but wish to speak. Can you come down to the mic? You have one minute. Excuse me. Can you come down to the podium? Okay. One minute only, and 10 people only. Go ahead. You have to state your name.
Hi, my name is Nicholas Oo. I immigrated here.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Spell that for me.
Nicholas Oo. Last name is O-O. Nicholas with an H.
Quiet, please.
Hi, I immigrated here from an island nation, thousands and thousands of miles away. You know, 10 years ago, I moved to New York City. I live one block from this development. Next to this development...
Quiet, please.
At this development site, it's a bunch of warehouses, parking lots, storage for abandoned cars. Really, nothing's... No one's gonna get displaced. I support this project. We need more housing. People are already moving to Astoria, and they're competing with existing tenants like myself for existing units. So we need more units to accommodate that and reduce the competition. And more units... That's the only way to fight rent growth. And if we want more subsidized affordable units, we can allow for more units to be built. If they double the number of units, we'll have double the number of affordable units. And absolute numbers. That helps more. So I support this project. Housing is a human right, but we actually need housing to make that real and not just empty slogan.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Tony Khalil. I'll keep this short. I live in Little Egypt here in Astoria. Unlike many of the speakers here tonight, I'm not a shill for the developers. Innovation Queens is a travesty for Astoria. I grew up in Section 8 housing, and I've worked for years in innovation prevention. The plans proposed by the developers will not help the residents of this community. Thank you.
Excuse me. Excuse me, sir. Your name. Spell it, please. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ali Sedah Marion. I work in a manufacturing company here in Queens. I've been trying to find a new place in Astoria, and as the rates have gone up, as we all know it, let's be realistic. Why do rent prices go up? Lack of supply?
Quiet, please.
Lack of supply and increase of demand. There's less than 1.5% vacancy rate here in Queens. Innovation Queens can be part of the solution by providing much-needed units. We are a growing company. I was a seventh employee. Now we're 23. Innovation Queens will be a huge boost to the economy by providing 1,700 permanent jobs. That will in turn lead to more spending and economic boost to the region. Also, I want to mention that no matter what our beliefs are, we can be respectful. When we boo the floating hospital, people who have put their lives on the line for us in the past two years, that's shame on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
Hello, my name is Bernard Garrett. I grew up in the Queensbridge houses. I've been a Long Island City resident for 60-plus years. And I do believe the project is good for a number of different reasons. About three years ago, the DIRIS organization built a two-multi-unit affordable housing over in Astoria. We at Queensbridge, we put 25 people to work on that particular job. And out of the 25 people that was working, 15 of them had felony records. They wouldn't have gotten no job nowhere. The police commissioner on the 108 precinct was bragging about how crime was down. And with this project right now, I'm sure we'll be able to put a lot of people to work because there's too much violence. And if these people have jobs, they'll go home and get some sleep, and they wouldn't be out here shooting.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Joanna Finesa. I didn't expect to speak today, but I feel very impassioned by what's going on. My parents moved here over 40 years ago. I'm a daughter of immigrant Italian parents. And essentially, what I'm hearing is a lot of promises being made by developers. We're hearing a lot of big buzzwords like "community spaces" and "affordable housing." But basically, at the end of the day, these are just empty promises. What I really am hearing and feeling is that there is a negotiation that needs to be made between the community and the developers. We can't just be all yes, and we can't just be all no. But the fact of the matter is that the affordable housing is not actually affordable. To have 2,800 units, most of them being luxury apartments that are probably gonna end up being overpriced and gonna be empty, but basically means that the landowners and whoever is renting those spaces out is essentially gonna write those offs as tax-free funds at the end of the year. And so this is basically a big game for big money to essentially just play with the residents of Astoria and break our backs. We're the working class of this county. We deserve rights to be heard, and it's very important that our needs are respected.
Time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shaheen Azhamdi. I live and work in the community. And also, I know I will not be able to vote for this one. I'm board of the community board because one of the partner is... I work there, and I hope so I don't lose my job because I am again, it's this program. Also, as this program going to be, is not affordable. This, I will not be able, as working, pay this rent. And I don't want to lose my house. I don't want to lose my work because of this. Please, I'm asking the board, vote no. Because this is what make us lose our place where we live now because everyone here living is low income. Please, help us to not lose this, and we stay in our community. I love to live in Astoria. Thank you.
Next.
Thank you.
Next.
Hi, my name is Maria Hansopoulos. I live about a block and a half away from the development on 43rd Street. Longtime, 27-year Astoria resident, and I am against this project. I am highly concerned about the impact. As many have said before me, I wasn't prepared to speak today either, about the impact of this on our neighborhood. We have seen what's happened in Williamsburg. We have seen what's happened in Harlem. Yes, they bill, 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 and people get pushed out, pushed out, pushed out. It does not serve the existing community. If we're gonna do something like this, you need to work in partnership. I've talked to some of the small businesses that exist right there. I mean, there's this discourse going on that nobody lives there. There are plenty of people that live there. We've talked to some of the small businesses. I've gone around. They didn't even know about this project. And their rents are gonna go up as a result? There has been such a lack of community engagement. And the community partners that are here seek to benefit from it. We're not stupid. We are not dumb. We can see what's going on here. So I urge you not... I urge the community board not, no, to vote no on this and to not to sell out the community.
Time's up.
Thank you very much.
Next.
Hi, my name is Arithi. I'm 13 years old. I've lived in Astoria my entire life.
What is your name, please?
Arithi. I'll tell you how to spell that later. Anyway. Look, anyway. I was raised by two disabled Greek immigrants. And in fact, I live right on Steinway between 34th and 35th Avenue, which is across the street from your plans of building a utopia. Now, like I said, my parents are disabled. They can't really work for an income higher than what they already receive. So if you go through with this, we're gonna be priced out. We're not gonna have anywhere to go. If it's not obvious enough, I do not support this.
Thank you. Next. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. My name is Mohammed Dar Islam. Nickname is Shalim. I live in over here 30 years. My family over here. I have a two son, one girl. They like this place. I like too, my country. So many people like over here and other country people like over here. So we can lose this place, this project. We are not like this, this project. This project only for big Greeks, people. They live in Manhattan Heights building. But we are small-income people live over here. We are very nice neighborhood. So I am against this project. They tell me, we are the interest. Lot of things they give me. Actually, they bullshit. They don't give me nothing. So I...
Thank you.
I am against this bullshit. Thank you very much.
Next, please. Thank you. Go ahead, please. Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Ashley Miller, and I'm an Astoria resident. I was also priced out of Brooklyn, which is why I'm here. Which is to say, I've seen this before. Astoria changes here. If we do nothing, housing will get more expensive. Before I came here today, I took a look at buildings for sale near the development area. Six-unit buildings are selling for over $2 million. And I can tell you, those landlords are not buying them to keep them affordable. If we do nothing, housing gets more expensive. New York City's population is growing, which creates price pressure on our housing stock. If we do nothing, housing gets more expensive. This isn't about the affordable housing in Innovation Queens. I don't trust a lot of that either. It's about the pressure it takes off the surrounding community. The project gives the gentrifiers a place to go. Innovation Queens has flaws, but it is housing we desperately need. I support this. I can distrust every single promise and still think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Astoria needs housing.
Next. Time's up. Next.
My name is Rena Grossman. I live on 36th Street, and I've been on this street for 14 years before the street was sold to Kaufman by our previous mayor. I used to be able to walk down the street. So I already know what's coming. I live with my partner, who is disabled. We both have chronic illness and disability. We've lived in this building that we're in. When I moved in with him 14 years ago, he was the only person living in the building. We live on 36th Street between Broadway and 31st Avenue. It is one of the most desirable places to live in the neighborhood. Some of the housing issues are artificial. As people moved out of our building, our landlord chose not to fill those units because it was more lucrative for him to keep the building empty and tried to push us out, abused us, surveilled us, so that we would leave the building so he could get a tax write-off and then sell it. So there's housing. People are hoarding. There's commercial space that's being hoarded.
Time's up. Thank you. Thank you. Next.
My name's Marcelo Lorca, and I'm all for this project to go ahead because I think it needs... Queens needs an upgrade. From all the years that is... From all the years it has been... They have done nothing to these blocks. And I think it will be beneficial to build this as they claim they're gonna build it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, everyone. My name is George Papastefanou. I've been living here for 22 years. My parents been here for another 20. And what I saw, this is my first time coming here, being exposed to any of this. What I saw in those environmental slides that you rushed through to get to the other stuff is I saw that the building I grew up in would be under shadow, basically, for most of the winter. And so I'm gonna quote from, what was his name? Diogenes, what he said to Alexander. He said, "If I had one thing in the world, stand a little out of my sunshine." So I'm against it.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Furia Akhtar. I am the lead organizer of Astoria's chapter, of Cav's chapter in Astoria. We've had 50 people here tonight, many of whom were told that they were not going to be able to speak because of limited space. And so they left. We had members who got here, who had finished work, and they got here after the event had started, and they were denied entry. They were told that it's a fire hazard. That's at least another 15 people. We have a whole line of folks who are residents here. My own father lives less than a mile from this development and will be priced out. Luxury housing has a high vacancy rate. 12.5% of units that cost more than $2,300 in New York City are vacant, and they're kept vacant on purpose. The real housing crisis is for affordable units. The real housing crisis is for affordable units. Those units that are claimed to be affordable would not be for people who are low-income and working-class. We are strongly against this development. Our folks are strongly against this development.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Goshaan Achol, and I've lived in this community for my whole life, which is the past 13 years. I go to PS 122 Mamie Fay, which is located in Astoria Dipmars. This rezoning is in no way beneficial for our neighborhood. This community is made up of immigrants and working-class people, and is very important to me. It's all I know, and I don't want my family and friends to be displaced. Being pushed out by increasing rents makes our lives so much more difficult and impacts our mental and emotional well-being. We also have to take into account what will happen to families like me who will be pushed out of their homes. Many immigrant families call Astoria home. We deserve to decide what happens here. I was born into Astoria, and I will stay here. You guys don't care about us, your project is ugly, this will tear our community apart. No Innovation Queens.
Thank you. Next. Shh, quiet. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Saida Firdos. I went to school here for a couple of years, and I'm strongly against Innovation Queens rezoning, because the problem isn't availability, the problem is the place not being affordable. We saw what happened in places like Hunter's Point. With that, I would like to ask people who put forward this project. If most of the people living here are working-class, how to explain having not even 50%, but estimatedly 25% of the total units being affordable? Do you truly think 711 units are enough for thousands of low-income people in this neighborhood? And that's all. Can you guys answer the question, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Fumida, and I've been living in Astoria for 13 years, and I'm against this because I think in general.
Go ahead. Take your time.
The rezoning development will cause displacement in our community, especially for immigrant families and working-class people of color, and I'm concerned because I don't want to be away from my friends and family.
Okay.
Can you state her name, please? Can you state her name, please? The young lady who spoke.
Go ahead, please.
Hello, my name is Arya Hussein, and I'm a 17-year-old high schooler. I actually don't live in Astoria, I live in Jackson Heights, but I was, the other day, my siblings and I, we were thinking of, oh, Astoria's a nice neighborhood, we should really move in here, because the renting situation in Jackson Heights isn't great either, it's like, it's very increasing in a very rapid rate, and we were thinking of moving into Astoria because we thought, oh, maybe the rents in Astoria might have been like, lower. But obviously, it isn't. We checked out all the rents, renting situation in Astoria, and we saw like, everything was like, over 2,500, and obviously, it's like, very, like, a very high price tag to reach. And like, if this project, if the project, the project that you guys showed us is really approved, the renting crisis will like, it will be further exacerbated, and like, the pricing will like, further increase, and I have a lot of friends who live in Astoria, and I don't want them to go through, go through this, and yeah, and I don't want the rent rates to rise like this. It's astonishing.
Thank you. Thank you, dear. Next. Okay, two more only.
Hi, my name is Matthew Chin. I'm an Astoria resident, and over the past few years, I've noticed the skyline of Long Island City just gets closer and closer and bigger and bigger. And last time, I asked during the Queens Innovation Town Hall, I asked you whether you could name any examples of when developments like this decreased the cost of living for residents, particularly in New York, and you had nothing, because they don't.
Thank you.
Got a minute?
Thank you. Next.
Assalamualaikum, my name is Tahida. I'm in Astoria, I'm 20 years old, I'm my mom and I. My mom and I are in Bangali community. My mom and I are here, I'm here. Everybody understand? Okay. So I'm, I'm here, 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 I'm here. I'm going to interpret for Tahida.
Yes, I assume.
My name is Tahida, I'm Asian. My name is Tahida, I've been living in this community for 20 years. My elderly parents live with me as well. In this community, they're able to live freely. This is their home, this is where they love to live, and this is where I want to raise my kids. I don't want to be displaced from this community, and this is my home, and I don't want to be pushed out, and I'm against this rezoning.
Thank you. Time's up. Thank you. Will you translate now?
Yeah, hi.
Can you also give me her name, please?
Yes. Hello, my name is Satara. I've been living here for one and a half years. The rents are really high here. We've been living here in a one-bedroom apartment, but we need a two-bedroom now. I have two sons and one daughter. I have a newborn, a 16-year-old, a six-year-old. My parents are very old. We also have family in Bangladesh that we have to take care of. Just because of rent, we, like, we have to like, pay rent and grocery and like, the general needs, and we have, we're out of money after that, right? Like, we can't go anywhere or do anything, we can't repair our house, there's no wind or like, sunlight in our house. Our child constantly gets sick because of this, but still, our rent increased this much by $100. If this rezoning passes, we're gonna, the rents in our houses are gonna rise more, and we're gonna have to leave. I want to demand that you guys vote no to this rezoning, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I thank you all for being here. This hearing will be continued on June 21st at the Community Board meeting held at the Astoria World Manor. Thank you all for coming again, and get home safe. Thank you.